So this meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Is anybody out there recording? You can wave a hand. Okay, I don't see anything. It's like, it's like, so there is official recording here that you'll have access, folks will have access to. The first order of business is approval of meeting minutes from May 5th, 2022.
Charles, could I, could I just ask prior to that, is Eric here tonight?
No, he's not.
So as far as minutes, we don't have Eric or Amy?
David's taking minutes.
Excellent. Thanks. Thank you, David.
That's called a default.
Yeah, right. Very, very gracious. Thank you, David.
So I will make a motion to approve the minutes prior to discussion.
Any further discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, I had two things. On page one, next to the bottom line, it says, "The project did go before the Conservation Commission with a negative determination." I don't recall it getting a negative determination.
Well, I mean, this was, this was, I'm sorry, I don't have the minutes with me, but this is for the, this was for the hotel.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, they went before the Conservation Commission and, and the negative determination would have meant there was no finding.
Ah, okay. I didn't understand how to interpret that. Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
The other thing, I was just a little confused about on regarding the proposed fire station. Near the end of that long paragraph, it says, "Hussy inquired on the fact that some of the fire apparatus, due to its size, will have to enter the site by way of Main Street." I thought there was no other way anything could enter the site except by way of Main Street.
Right. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, that's not clear, is it?
It's not. And then it says that Mr. Allen responded that Fire Chief Strahan is aware of this and is looking into installing a flashing light to deal with this issue. And my recollection is the flashing light had to do with apparatus exiting onto Main Street when there was a call.
That's right.
So.
That was the concern with it.
Yeah, so these, these, that's seemingly inaccurate and not a quick fix as far as those minutes. So I, I think they need to be reviewed and perhaps compared with the, the recording before approval.
No, that's a good point. And well, the ZBA is, is going to be reviewing this on first. I mean, what we could do is I could, I could speak with Eric about these minutes and try and straighten up that wording. Maybe we can get those out by the first, I think, for the ZBA.
So they would be reviewed at the next meeting again?
Um, yeah, I think that's what, that's what we would, yes, we'd review them at the next meeting. So we might, they might, they might not be out in time for the ZBA, but you know, though, I'm sure, I'm sure that, I'm sure they'll, they'll, they'll raise that issue.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the minutes are accurate from the point of view, the decisions that were made. But that, those details and that narrative and obviously would want all of our thought process and concerns shared with the decision-making body in a timely way. So I'm not sure what our options are. I mean, I guess we could approve these provisionally under those circumstances with the idea that that last section of that item would be compared against the, the recording for clarification and accuracy.
That's a good way to do it.
Because we want to serve the ZBA.
Right.
Don't want to hold this up for procedural reasons, but that really did jump out at me is not, not capturing the, the flow of the discussion or the traffic.
George, you're still, you're still referencing the language pertaining to the exiting of the apparatus onto Main Street. Does that put
Correct.
specifically you're focused on?
Correct.
Okay.
Because those few sentences make it sound like it's about traffic entering rather than exiting. Yep.
Is, is it as simple as just saying exiting on the Main Street? Entering?
No, because it says some of the equipment would, would exit onto Main Street, then it would say that, and that doesn't make sense. There's, there's no other exit or entry. So.
I think it could be as simple as just saying all equipment will be, will be exiting on the Main Street.
Well, that is.
On the Main Street, because that's the reality of it.
That is true. Yep. Yeah, and I don't know who, who brought that up. That's not as important, but the flashing light was to deal with that issue. So sure, if we said that the fire apparatus, well, it's not due to its size, it's due to the site.
Right.
We'll have to exit onto Main Street. So it, it, that's the, that's the essence of the concern, of the inaccuracy.
Right. So maybe we just sort of clarify that point.
Yeah, I don't think we'd make sense to try to wordsmith it completely right now, but.
Right. But I think if we, if we do that, then we can approve the minutes and, and I'll, I'll, I'll just make sure Eric understands what we were, what we were saying.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. So we've, we've had a first and a second and a discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor passing the minutes?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the discussion item for discussion of potential moratorium on marijuana cultivation facilities and on potential amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to marijuana establishments. So we, it was, we, we had a very informative public hearing last week. I think we heard a lot of, a lot of concerns and a lot of, a lot of options to consider in terms of how we might be modifying the ordinance for outdoor cultivation. We, we kind of have, we, we have a couple of options here. One is to, is to put forward the idea of a moratorium and in lieu of further study. And the other idea is to, the other option is to, is to just jump right into modifying the ordinance to, 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 so it's more responsive to the concerns of the public. And then it was sort of, it was streamlined the process because it, rather than, you know, putting the moratorium forward and then, you know, that's like, that's like a couple of month process to get it through the city council. And then it's, it would be studying the, the ordinance and then going to another public hearing and the city council approval process. And so it kind of draws it out. So what does the board think about the idea of, I'm curious, your ideas, George and David? But you know, the one about moving forward, the idea of modifying the ordinance as opposed to putting a moratorium on right away?
Well, I'll.
George.
Oh, I think, Dave, do you want to say something?
I'm not sure that I have the right, the answer for that dilemma right now. But what I wanted to ask was whether either of you is, is aware of whether the council, the city council is going to move on this issue. I, I watched last night and they didn't get to anything having to do with the moratorium. But does anyone know whether they actually continued the city council meeting from last night to tonight to finish up what they had on Eric? The reason I asked is that I had understood from one of the counselors that she was going to raise the moratorium as new business at the city council meeting.
George?
Charles, I think I can speak to that. The, the public hearing notice for the hearing that happened last week states the city council may consider the same, the petition on Wednesday, June 15th. So they were, this is slated to go before the council at the June meeting. And the procedure after having the joint public hearing is that for this body and the Economic Development Committee of the Council to make recommendations to the council that they would consider at the June meeting.
Okay. So it was, it was, it was my understanding that the moratorium, as it was worded, didn't, didn't qualify as an ordinance that could be considered and passed by the city council. Is that, is that, is that your understanding, George or David?
I'm not sure where you're getting that information. I don't know anything beyond reading the language of the, of the petition and, you know, hearing the input from the public last week. I don't have any other information. I mean, certainly the, the, do you want to mute folks, Charles? Unless it's one of, it's not my dog.
Yeah.
And then Dave and I can unmute.
Okay, everybody's muted now. David and George. Okay.
So, I mean, as it's in the petition, it's, it's, you know, a general suggestion of putting special permits for marijuana cultivation projects on hold. As you said, until it can be properly identified, potential impacts and some alternatives. So there isn't, it isn't put in the form of a specific proposal for a certain amount of time, just the general idea of having a, you know, a hold on that. But so you're giving new information for me, at least when you say something about that can't be enacted by the council. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that was, as I understand it, that was the opinion of the town attorney. Was that, was it the ordinance as, as it was, as it was drafted, the moratorium, as it was drafted, couldn't be adopted as an ordinance by the city council?
And that's something you heard as chair? Because we as a board haven't heard that, I don't think, right?
I think, I think, I thought Eric forwarded that email to everybody.
No, I didn't get it.
Okay. All right. And, and so, and since the public hearing, you know, we haven't, we haven't deliberated and passed on any recommendation to the city council on the moratorium yet either.
Well, this is the first time we're meeting.
Right. But this is a discussion item as opposed to an action item.
Yes. So our next, and I'm frankly, it's unfortunate that we're not sitting as a full board tonight. I'll say that too. For something that is drawn so much public attention and concern. So what is, just from the point of view of, I saw that this was a discussion and not a decision-making item on the agenda tonight. So our next meeting is June 2nd. And does that allow for enough time to get our, any other recommendations into the packet for the June 15th meeting?
I, I, I'm not aware of the deadline requirements for that.
Thanks.
We have to ask Eric that.
George, you're, you're referencing the moratorium now, is that correct?
Well, I'm referencing, no, because, not just the moratorium, because the petition is kind of double, twofold in that it's asking for the moratorium, but it's also suggesting significant changes to the current ordinance, you know, such as setbacks, placements and tier size. And so there's a number of factors we could consider in addition to the moratorium. As, as Charles is saying, we could speak to the moratorium issue. We could also speak to the, any specific recommendations for zoning change to the council. And we could also take the, perhaps the, the advice of the petition to heart and say, well, if there can be a moratorium, then we take a bit more time to study, to study this, to come up with something rather than doing it as quickly. That's the idea of the moratorium is to buy some time before other projects come down the pipeline. So.
Right. Right. And the, and so the, the thought behind perhaps just going directly to modifying the zoning is that, is that if we can, if we can come to, if we can come to a consensus that, that, that addresses the concerns of, of, of residents of Greenfield, you know, in, in a timely fashion with, with, by, you know, in, by rewriting the, the ordinance for, for cultivation. That's the most direct route to an answer as opposed to going, going to a moratorium and then, and then, and then rewriting it and.
Is that email something you can, is it brief, Charles? Can you forward it to us or quote it to us or something?
Let me, let me just see if I can.
Because it sounds like significant data to have if it's affects that part of our discussion.
Let me just, let me, let me look, George.
Thank you.
I don't think I can find it quickly. I'm not finding it, George. Sorry.
This is something that came from Eric, is it?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking that it might be, actually, I might have, I might be confused, might, might have been confused. It might have been about the A and R.
Oh.
Conversation about, about, about what, about which takes precedence, the, the, in, in terms of the timeline of the ordinance versus the A and R.
Thanks. Um, so, um, one, one piece of, other piece of data I was interested in finding out, I'm sorry, Eric's not available this evening too. But obviously we can consult with him outside of the meeting to get some, some information. The, I mean, there's obviously been nothing submitted at this point that's come through to the boards as far as the specific project on Country Club with the, the three tier 11. And is your understanding that that would be something that would be submitted as independent projects? That, that was the sense I got from what I've heard so far.
You mean three independent projects?
Mm-hmm. That those.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. My guess is, my guess is, is that it'll be presented as one project, submitted as one project, one development project with, with three, three entities, three business entities.
Okay.
Fine for one project.
I mean, it's an important technicality and I honestly don't know the answer.
I think that's how they would do it. I mean, I don't, I don't know, rather than go through three approval processes.
Yeah, I don't know. Because I'm just, I'm just thinking about what protections there are in the current ordinance and the, sorry, searching for my papers here. The, the purpose of the, oh, I'll look at my electronic version, the ordinance.
What, what are you looking?
I'm just looking for the marijuana establishments. And in the purpose, it states that the purposes provide for the orderly placement of marijuana establishments in areas where such use is not inconsistent with the neighborhood character. So, and I know that's the overwhelming concern that's been expressed through the signers of this petition and the folks who gave their testimony at the public hearing. I mean, that's obviously a general and vague, you know, protection. But I just want to note that that is there. And.
No, that's true. And, and then, and it's the special permit process, you know, outlines, you know, specific criteria in which to evaluate a proposed project in terms of, in terms of its compatibility with the neighborhood. And so that, that's, that's an opportunity to, for folks to speak out and for, and to, you know, and, and for, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know what the ZBA is going to do. Like, I would, I would never presume to
Right.
predict or speak for them, but there is an opportunity there. It's another, it's another, it's, that's where it's at the level in which the project will ultimately be, you know, approved or denied or modified.
And, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm concluding that's sufficient protection for neighborhoods. But I just want to note, you know, that as a starting point of what we have currently in the ordinance and, and want to try to get a sense of the, the specific project that stirred up this concern.
Right.
And, you know, in thinking of this, and as we always have to do, we have to consider wide range of applications of any use. And you look at the zoning map and the, the area of the city that is in that zone, rural residential is huge.
Right.
I don't know the percentage actually, but it's, it's very large. So just, just trying to be, you know, thoughtful about if there are any parameters as was suggested by the signers of the, of the petition for issues such as setback or tier size or other protections, to have those as a standard thing.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I would agree. I mean, I think the things that we can look at are, are setback, setbacks, the quality of the, you know, what's, what's the fencing like that's, that's around, you know, around these facilities? And, you know, what, what is, what is, what is the lighting? There's requirements for cameras. I, I sent along that, that Mass General Law PDF and there's a, and the, the, the prescriptive requirements for cultivation facilities are, are rather vague. And, and, and I think there's, there's a lot of room for interpretation in, in, like, there's no, there's no specific requirement for an eight-foot chain link fence and concertina wire. There's, it has to be obstructed from view is, is, is I think all that it says in, in a secure area. So, you know, there's, there's, there's room in there for us to maybe, maybe think about what, what, what the fencing is and, 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 you know, I'm not, I'm not an expert on this, but the use of infrared cameras as opposed to cameras that require, you know, lights to record action, so that doesn't have to necessarily be bright lights around these facilities. I think that would be. So I think with, with, with some research, we could, you know, be thinking about those sorts of things. David?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about the number of issues that need to be added here. And I'm wondering if maybe that's one of our first steps is to be able to list all of those types of issues that you were just starting to list and to try to pull them together. And I wanted to add to that, the, the two that seem to be quite prominent are the, the odor. And I'm also concerned about water consumption. And not much has been said about that, but I'm thinking that it might be useful for us to take a more in-depth look at that. And perhaps, I don't know if we have anyone in town on the highway department who is a water expert and knows about the, the consumption of the town water. And I'm thinking that we need some expertise here that we don't have as a board to, to look at some of these issues at much more in depth. So I just wanted to add that to the, to the list as well.
Yeah, those are, those are good thoughts, David. And yet I sort of wonder, Rick, where's the water coming from? Okay, it can come from the sky when it rains. It's probably in a lot of these, in a lot of the rural neighborhoods, it's not, it's, you know, water services provided by private wells as opposed to, you know, the town, town water. And so how does that affect the water table?
Right.
As you start to, you know, have more of these cultivation facilities springing up and.
I would, I would assume that those issues would be put forth by those folks wanting to do this project. But if we can kind of get a head start on this in anticipation that we will want to know a lot more about the water consumption, we'll want to know a lot more about the odor mitigation. And if we could kind of get that list together so that we and others can help us craft a language around that.
Right.
It's going to take an enormous amount of time, in my opinion, to, to put all of this together. And so the more expertise we can assemble, the better off I think we'll be in the long run. And we have certainly a lot of people who are interested. Right now, we have 58 people sitting with us. And I, I think we also have the expertise in town that we can call upon. And so I'd like to, just urge us to do that. And I, I think we also have the expertise in town that we can call upon. And so I'd like to just urge us to do that.
Thanks, David. Well, so do we want, does it make sense to? To, and you know, again, I wish we had, we don't, we have our full board here, but I think the three of us can, can start with. The beginning of, of a list of things that we like to, we like to explore and possibly. You know, you know, you know, consider as a step to be taken.
I'd like to give a shout out. I'm sorry to interrupt. Maybe you'd prefer that I raise my hand first before I speak.
Since there's only three of us, David, you know.
Since there are only three of us, a little informality would work, but I, I wanted to give a shout out to Al Norman, who has sent us. Some, some suggestions and some comments and some references and resources that have been really very helpful to me. I can't speak for the two of you, but have been very helpful to me in, in understanding of this issue in greater detail.
Yeah.
Charles, I just wanted to make a procedural point. I see that someone has generously tried to offer something in the chat. And just to inform people that. Because things on the chat wouldn't be accessible to someone who is watching a recording of this. It's against the state open meeting law to have substantive exchanges in the chat during an open meeting, during a public meeting. It can only be used for like taking a list of people who want to speak at a public hearing or something like that. So sorry about that. I know it's in many Zoom meetings. That's. We, we all have done a lot of exchanges and stuff like that. It's just. A technicality of the open meeting law. It's not allowed, but I would suggest if, you know, following up on what. Dave was saying, that that individual and others could send. These kind of input. Thoughts and maybe technical. Expertise or experience on to Eric and he could channel it to Charles who could channel it to the board. So we would have access to that input.
That, that's true. We do, we do welcome public communication by, by email. We read, we read everybody's emails. We take them into, into serious consideration. So. That, that's a good way to communicate.
So I do like this idea of, oh, sorry, Charles.
Don't go ahead.
That was, that was too informal. I do like this idea of, as Dave suggested, of just putting down a list of the very, the different parameters we want to consider. And kind of getting that framework for our next meeting and so that. And I think getting. These minutes with those parameters to the rest of the board. Sufficiently in advance of the, our next meeting so that they can be thinking about and researching those things would be helpful. Because I know sometimes we don't get them until, you know, a couple of days before. So that would be a good idea. And this also, before we get into. You know, making sure. The items we have on that list, I also, this speaks to the moratorium idea because if we're saying, because I, you know, we're always trying to. Be as thoughtful and thorough as we can and anticipate the wide range of situations and. And. So we're trying to, you know, find the right solution to these, these things and. Sometimes doing that, it makes doing it quickly difficult. But the moratorium is something that would. By time and since. You were clarifying or correcting Charles that you don't have any reason that the council could not impose a moratorium on this. I honestly don't know. What the legal nature of that is. But I, I would be inclined to support that. Of course, we're not making a decision as a board tonight. We would do that in two weeks' time. But.
Yeah.
But I'd be inclined to support that portion of the petition. To give us time to come up with a reasoned. Reasoned. You know. Change, recommendation for a zoning change.
George, I'd like to, I'd just like to state that Amy Mann has joined us.
Oh, excellent.
Amy's alternate on the planning board and. David, if you could just make note in the minutes that Amy came in at 6:30 and.
6:30, yep.
And I, and Amy, I will, I will bring, I will make, make you a. Voting member of the, of our quorum, if that's okay with you at this point.
Oh, sure.
Great. Thank you for joining. So you've been following along a little bit. Do you, do you have any, any thoughts at this time or? Or should we just sort of jump into our, into our list here?
No, let's jump in. I've been following, you know, in the, the news outlet. You know, just trying to keep up with everybody's concerns. It seems to be a very. Serious concern and I look forward to all the information that people have. Spent their time and expertise gathering.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Does it, does it make sense to, um? To, I mean, since, since David brought up Al Norman's points that he made up, does it make sense to? Just enter those into the record right now as part of our list and just let folks hear that? What, what George, what Al had to say?
Well, I, I don't know if that would be the list. I think. Those proposals. Might apply to, no, no, I'm just saying from a list, I'm talking about not specific recommendations, but parameters.
Okay.
Parameters like odor. That Dave was talking about water uses. Appearance. Setbacks, tier size, spacing. A limited number for the town as a whole. Those are various things that have. Come up and I think. Al had, you know, provided some previous suggestions as well for the, for the hearing. And he ran through some of those verbally, but he provided the board with some detailed written material that would have been too hard to get through in that. You know, timeframe and. And I think. So, you know, like, you know, he's addressing tier size and things like that. So those were all false. Those would be specific recommendations within that list. So that's.
If you were saying.
Yep.
Okay. Well, George, that was a pretty, that was a pretty effective rundown. David, do you want to sort of, did you write those down? Could you sort of recite them back?
I did write them down, but yes.
All right. Well, do you want, should we, I mean, I think that, I think that captured it. Do we want to have a discussion on each of those items? And see if anything more comes up?
True.
You know, it's very hard to do this in a meeting setting. My mind doesn't work that quickly sometimes. And if I have the time offline to get, bring some notes together and to do some, some studying, I've been looking up other towns zoning regulations, for example. And they're full of ideas and thoughts that we haven't begun to, to touch on. And I, I just feel this offline. Study of trying to pull this together, it would be more effective than our trying to do this. As we go tonight. I know it's time consuming, but I think, I feel I could do a much better job if I didn't have to take notes and participate in a conversation also. Which is, you, you guys have an awful lot of stuff talked that we've been talking about and it's hard to take notes and. And do, be thoughtful about it as well.
I can appreciate that, Dave. I served as the clerk for three years.
Good, all right.
Yeah, and I, and I apologize. I laughed a little bit when you say it's hard to do it in a meeting. I mean, as a board, that's the only place we.
I know.
Come to any decisions or have any deliberation, but I appreciate you talking about individual research outside of meeting time. And, and certainly we can, as we were talking about, Charles can, the information to the board, we can't discuss it. Amongst ourselves outside of the meeting, but we can certainly absorb it and come to some, you know, opinions and conclusions.
And share our, our work perhaps. With each other at, at a meeting and we can kind of pull it together. It's very hard to pull something like this together.
Yep.
It's expansive.
Yep.
Yep. Well, 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 David, would you, would you, would you mind just reciting back the list that, that George just sort of recited? And, and then we.
The list that, that he cited. That I caught were appearance, tier size, spacing, and I assume you mean spacing amongst, between plants?
Between projects.
Between projects, okay. Setbacks. And. Limited number of operations. I assume you mean outdoor cultivation, correct?
Right. Well, well, we're, we're talking about. Yeah, I mean, one of the, I was talking about limited number for the whole town, just like we have a, a set number of retail marijuana establishments. We have a cap on that. And that was, again, something that was suggested amongst the input we've had so far. And another input was to not have any outdoor. In the. Rural residential, not have any outdoor. So there's been a wide range of proposals and suggestions. I mean, that would be another, I guess, outdoor versus indoor.
Right. And maybe there are different tier levels allowed or not allowed, depending on whether it's an indoor or outdoor grow facility. I know with the, with the indoor facilities. It's easier to control odor. But then you're, 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 you're building potentially very large buildings.
Right.
On airable, on airable land, so.
And that was why we had originally recommended. The outdoor grows for the urban residential because in other zones it is indoor. And we had to. To. Under the, the, and I understand this is not. Considered an agricultural use and in our zoning, it's not listed under agricultural uses. It's listed under, I think, other uses.
Right.
So. But, you know, just from the appearance point of view to have, because it specifies that they have to be farm-like structures. And that can be reused as for farming purposes. So, and also you would actually start off the list, Dave, and I.
I was going back to that part again.
Okay.
And what I had noted earlier was the setbacks, which, which appeared twice. Fencing, lighting, requirements for cameras, restrictive. And water. And then within those are all kinds of subheadings, as I said. So. And enlargements of each one of those definitions.
Yeah. And to give you credit, Dave, you also mentioned odor. That was the first thing.
I did. Thank you. Okay, right.
Because that was something that was raised as a major concern by a lot of people.
Right. That was a major, right.
Right. And the only way you can really control odor is with setbacks and. And, and it's going to be minimal because it all depends on which way the wind's blowing and. I think to a large degree.
Well, and, and some, you know, in the, the materials that were shared in the position, the petition. The comparables you were talking about, Dave, sometimes have various setbacks. The, the biggest one, I think, was 500 feet. And they vary a little bit, whether it's from the property line or it's from the. The red, the structure itself. And that's an important detail to have because that can be a big difference. And also some just don't allow, they prohibit outdoor growth, growing altogether. So.
Right. I think Pittsfield did that, right?
I'm not sure which one, but.
Yes.
And that was a sampling, you know, of them and it was awful because it's, we do this a lot of. You know. You know, researching other. Communities standards and their experience and that kind of thing. We're happy to borrow slash steal ideas from.
They prohibited the outdoor growing in rural, in residential sections.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Yeah, and it is, I know, I know there was a reference in, in the petition to. Was it moderate or? Highly dense. Am I getting that right? Medium to high residentially zoned areas. And it's. It's tricky because as I was saying, the. Rural residential is a large swath of town and the circumstances for different areas are going to vary quite a bit with the density of the actual housing.
Right.
But we can't establish a, we can establish some parameters within that, like, you know, the setbacks and stuff, but we can't. I can't say, well, this section of that zone, we have to do it for this, for the entire zone.
Well, we could do it based on. On, on, on how big a piece of property is within his own.
Yep.
You know, on, if we, for instance, if we had a 500-foot setback, that would, that would eliminate a number of properties right out, right out of the box in terms of.
Right.
Personal that could support cultivation.
Point taken, yeah. And. Getting back to the. Appearance thing, I want to, I appreciate you sharing that. Stuff from the Cannabis. Commission, Charles, and it does say. A perimeter security fence designed to prevent, prevent unauthorized entry. And I don't know if. In practice, they have particular standards. It also says something about a non. Commercial-grade, non-residential locks. So, you know, some of it's pretty specific. And I remember when there was a discussion of a previous. It was a previous presentation for a proposal. And talked about use of, there, there wouldn't be lighting that was continuously on or anything like that. And I believe some use of infrared, but those variables are all important from the point of view. How it is impacted as is. Requirements for screening and that's. Is that in the cannabis control?
Well, well, I mean, really, all it says is about, about fencing is that. A marijuana establishment that is outdoors shall implement adequate security measures to ensure that outdoor areas are not readily accessible to unauthorized individuals. And to prevent and detect diversion, theft or loss of marijuana, which shall at a minimum include, and then it goes on to talk about. A perimeter security fence, defense. A perimeter security fence designed to prevent unauthorized entry to cultivation facility with signs notifying observers that it is a limited access area. That's all it says about fencing. So. It seems to me as though there's, there, there's, there's, there's room. For us to talk about fencing and, and what it is and the quality of fencing and the height and. Things like that.
Yeah, I, I assume there's a, a pretty standard minimum for thing that would function as a security fence. And I don't know about the barbed or concertina wire or not. And the other issue is the, the screening. And I remember some individual said, well, it wouldn't really. The site that people were referencing. Currently wouldn't, that wouldn't be sufficient because of the slope. And I know people were talking about that, but. There's also something in the. The state law about visibility of certain aspects of the project, you know. So there's some degree of screening. You can't just have a bare, bare fence because then you would see the, you know, the marijuana plants and stuff like that. And I think that's, that's supposed to be. Screened from view, so.
Right, right. But I mean, there, you, so you could have, you could have a chain link fence with like that sort of strapping that weaves in between the links to make it obscure, or you could. Or you could say it's got to be, you know, painted wood stockade fence, or I'm not, I don't know, I'm not saying one's better than the other. I'm just saying that there's. There's a range of kind of, of kind of fencing options that, that maybe we could, we can think about and require. Just, you know, if we want to, if we want. Just, you know, if we want to, if we wanted things to look less institutional. I think I think understanding lighting requirements is really important.
Yeah.
There's nothing specific that I could see in in the in the Mass General Law that that talked about um lighting specifically. It talks a lot about um uh video surveillance and cameras and being able to get uh uh images when we need, like, it says, like, one of the things it says about video cameras, video cameras at all points of entry and exit and in any parking lot shall be appropriate for normal lighting conditions of the area under surveillance. So what's, what are normal lighting conditions at nighttime? I don't, I don't, I don't know. But it would, it would seem that um that, you know, that's where you might want to still be in infrared options for for cameras, and maybe that, and maybe that's standard at this point, you know, but that's something we need to look at.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the um setback issue is something that um addresses a number of these concerns to some degree, it mitigates them. Uh the order, uh the appearance, um the uh how how many locations could accommodate uh something if you have, like you say, as big as a 500-foot setback, uh you're going to eliminate some tracks from consideration.
Right.
Um and then obviously, there's the the question of having outdoor at all. I know one, like I said, recommendation that had been shared with us is to um allow only indoor cultivation in the RC District, and I know this body had um last year uh been concerned about um that that kind of large industrial structure on farmland being incompatible with the neighborhood character.
Right.
So um
But we do allow greenhouses, we do allow in greenhouses, I believe, don't we? Right.
Charles, could I?
Yes.
Um it's okay, I just want to repeat, a few people have put comments in the chat again, and I just, is it okay for me to repeat what I was mentioning before?
Yeah, yeah, please, George.
Um so just to let people know, we're interested in input, we um can't take in input in the chat during a public meeting, it's a violation of the state's open meeting law because that communication is not accessible to anyone else who's watching this recording after the fact. Um so unfortunately, it's it's a common Zoom habit we all have, I think, to you know, uh do things in the chat during the course of a meeting, it's not an option for a public meeting. Um if you want to uh send those comments instead along to Eric Torg uh the city planner, and he will uh convey them to Charles, who will get them to the rest of the board. So I just wanted to say, because we're not going to be reading them, so I don't want people to waste their time, um putting their thoughts, their good thoughts in there, so thank you. Sorry for the awkwardness of it.
That's okay, thank you, George. Um so I guess we were, we were talking about um enclosed cultivation um and uh building sizes and compatibility with um so the the, you know, the world, the world character of some of these neighborhoods and um you know, this and and I think, I think the ordinance now states, as you, as you mentioned, George, that buildings have to be have to appear agricultural in in nature and be able to be repurposed for agricultural uses at this, right now, as 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 the ordinance is currently written.
Right.
So there is some protection there.
Yeah, they will, however, have to be behind that security, unfortunately, so um so it's just from the point of view of the impact on the.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's true if it's if it's in a building, if you need the security fences or not. But that's something to research in the in the cannabis laws. Um Yeah.
And another big thing is the whole tier question. I mean, we did jump from uh last year, from the original ordinance in 2018, was just tier one uh for this zone and uh went uh with uh with uh um uh reminds me of um Spinal Tap, we went to tier 11.
Right, yeah.
And so we went all the way to uh the maximum. Uh so uh it's it's worth reconsideration, should we, is there a happier medium here? Um again, one of the suggestions was go back to um tier one, uh and we've seen some other towns limit it up to tier three or four, I think, so.
Right.
Um that's another.
Yeah, that's, I think that's another, another good good metric to look at, um is the tier sizes. Yeah, I don't think, I still don't think that it was ever anticipated that there would be three tier elevens on one piece of property right next to each other.
Nope.
So it's the unintended consequences.
Yeah. And and again, just to just say, that's a a uh a coming proposal, is our understanding. Uh there's nothing, I don't know if anything's been submitted to the town officially, well, there's been the the process of the um uh host uh community process, uh which had to happen before and um and there have been the public meetings um that uh the uh proponents have had. Um but I don't know if there's been an actual proposal uh submitted, and we don't know that how that would fare. Um I mean, certainly, this uh this body would make a recommendation uh about such a proposal, and then it would uh be decided on by the ZBA.
Right.
And I I referenced the, you know, some of being out of character with the the neighborhood, certainly you're on uh with some of these other uh limitations uh that have been suggested by the public and that we're considering, they provide you a much more uh solid and legally sustainable uh guideline than just a a general phrase. Um if if something were to be denied or were to be required to be significantly cut back, um so um I think this is a helpful process, but again, I agree with you that no one had, uh at least we hadn't anticipated someone making this kind of a uh conglomerated proposal.
Right. Um yeah, so nobody, to my knowledge, nobody has submitted um a a permanent application uh for for Country Club Road. Um I I I do know that it's a, you know, it's an expensive and and time-consuming process to put together a uh a site plan and design for something like this, and so it may not happen right away, um but there's no way to know, really. David?
Uh this screams to have a draft. Uh it seems to me s- somebody has to put together uh the all of these ideas into text. Uh and I wish that we could point to someone who has this special talent. Uh I don't know of anyone who does. Uh I will volunteer to try to pull together a draft. Although I am not qualified to do this, but somebody has to.
Well, that's really Eric's job.
Is it really? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, he'll, he'll, you know, with 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 input from us.
Okay.
And then and then the input we receive from the public and, you know, some ideas are going to be, you know, some ideas will be um allowed by law, so some restrictions may not be legal, so we have to sort of, we have to weed out the allowable versus the the non allowable sort of limitations we want to put, and then and then Eric will we will will synthesize all that information, and it'll be sort of an iterative process, it'll take a meeting or two or three at the most with hopefully with us to put to put forward an or an ordinance that that we would then initiate and go through the public hearing process and send on to city council. But um yeah, Eric, that's, I think that's in Eric's job description.
So we need to provide him with some other than the notes from this discussion, uh which has been a little bit hard to follow at times. Uh we need to, I guess, need to summarize uh and try to put this into some useful text.
Well, I think, I think the list is a really good, a really good place to start, and then the nuance of the conversation isn't as important really as 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 the core ideas.
The ideas.
Which are essentially these, there's these, these metrics we want to look at, and then and then we have to, you know, at our next meeting, you know, it's a, it's, you know, we can get it on the agenda and discuss it, um all the more members of the board, and we can, and then and Eric can start thinking about, you know, formulating the uh the the language for the ordinance proposal.
And um David would help, because I know you're you're taking on this uh uh minutes task, and also it's it's a complex thing, we're kind of bouncing around with different uh aspects of it, and um and you're trying to, and you are participating as well. Um I would expect Charles to be open if you wanted to share the draft minutes with him before you submit them to Eric, I bet Charles would be open to that, and um as you're not a quorum, that would be okay to have that collaboration, so.
That's right, yeah, that's a good idea, George.
Happy to do that.
Thanks, David. Um so what are, what are the thoughts about about the mor- about the moratorium? At this point, I guess. So if indeed the more, if 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 I'm wrong and the moratorium, if I misunderstood and the moratorium is is valid, then we can, you know, we we can, we can deliberate and forward a recommendation to the city council at our next meeting, and they will, they'll they'll take whatever action they they deem appropriate. Um yeah.
Assuming it's an option, uh I was saying before, I am in favor of that, I it occurs to me, you know, obviously, it's six months or a year, I don't know what would be more realistic. Um so uh I'll just offer that perspective.
All right, I think part of the problem with the moratorium is it was written, was it was it, it wasn't specific about a timeframe.
It was not.
Right.
But I don't know if that means one can't be, I mean, the intent is clear.
Right.
And so I don't know if um that, yeah, so I don't know if that means that that's just giving the framework and then we can give specific, you know, parameters to it.
Right. Well, yeah, my understanding of the process is that, is that, is that the 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 language of the of the of the of the moratorium was as it was submitted in this, in the citizen's petition, and that was essentially going to be adopted into the ordinance as written.
And that would seem, that would seem difficult because you can't just put, there's a moratorium. It's, it has to be, you know, a length of time, I assume.
Right.
Unless, unless it's just said there is a moratorium, and then they have to change the ordinance again when it's over. Um I don't know, but.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, well, since since Eric's not here to to advise us on this, um I I hesitate to offer further conjecture.
I'm interested in hearing how the three of you feel about, generally about, depending on the technicalities about the idea of a morium and a length. You might suggest.
Uh I am fully in favor of a moratorium, uh and I would suggest that it be a year.
Yep.
Um I I did, I did have a conversation with Eric about about a moratorium in general, and and the idea is that it's six months to a year to give us, to give the town, the city, time to to draft and and um finalize an ordinance. So yeah, six months to a year would make sense.
I think anything less than than a year uh puts a lot of pressure uh on the process uh and would end up with something less than an ideal uh package, I think. So that's why I extended it to a year because lots of things will happen between now and then.
Right, well, six, I don't know what the difference is between six months and a two, a year and a year. I guess it just uh, a year is a year, so either, yeah, either way. I guess it just, it just isn't, it it six months to a year implies that it could happen sooner. If we don't have it in six months, we better get it in a year. Good.
But but he was suggesting, Eric was suggesting, Charles, that it could be arranged like that, that would be a legal?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, okay. That gives flexibility as well as protection.
Right.
Interested in hearing, Amy, if you had a thought about the moratorium aspect.
Yeah, I think that um the a suitable length of time in order to thoughtfully approach this, do some research, see what other towns are doing. This is obviously unprecedented for Greenfield, and I think it deserves um, you know, at least six months to a year, so that we are not allowing our citizens to be um blindsided by um things they could not have anticipated when they purchased their properties.
Well put.
Thanks, Amy. Um so we'll we'll have that on our agenda for uh our first June meeting, the 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 moratorium. And then uh and then I think at the same time, I think we can be uh we 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 should be, we should be discussing and 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 getting the ball rolling on the uh you know, on on changing the ordinance at the same time on a parallel track. I don't think we have to wait for the moratorium to be put in place before we start acting on the uh on the ordinance. I think they should both be moving forward.
What I would um suggest, Charles, is to have um I mean, I don't think we're at a point, as we're talking about gathering further information and perspectives, um to hone this thoughtfully. I don't think we're at a point to make a a recommendation um to the council, it doesn't sound like it to me. Uh but I would suggest, as you've done, there was another um topic you did this with of just having it as a as a a steady um item on the agenda, so it's on agenda for every meeting, so we keep momentum and keep focus on it.
Right.
So I would suggest uh we do that with this discussion as well, so we're continuously um uh, you know, putting pressure on ourselves to gather and hone the information.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good idea, just keep it as a, as a rolling agenda item and and uh, you know, I think that I think, I think, I think we can, we can sort of get to get to the bottom, to the to the heart of a lot of these issues, and I don't, I I I'm I'm optimistic that it's not going to take forever to do this, but it does have to be done thoughtfully. So that, so that, and that's, I guess that's the benefit of the moratorium is it gets us time to to have that kind of due consideration.
I don't want to be complacent because it sneaks up on you.
Right.
And and obviously, we're just talking about. And, and obviously we're just talking about, we're not making a recommendation tonight because this is, was not on the agenda as a decision item, but we're, we're, we're talking about making that decision of a recommendation to the council at the next meeting. But we, we can't know what the council will decide, but we can only control our recommendation.
Right. Is there anything else we should be talking about here before we move on to our next agenda item?
Let's move on.
All right.
Yeah, I think this is complete for, for the moment at this stage.
All right. Well, well, thanks for all your thoughtful input and thanks to the public for, for joining us. I hope it was, it was somewhat helpful for you to listen in on us.
And, and you know.
About this important issue.
Reminder to people, anything they happen to put in the chat, they could send to, send to Eric and any other input, so.
Right, right. We do, we do read all emails. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item. Planning Board Recommendation to the City Council on the potential sale of city-owned property for a portion of parcel one twenty-four fifty-three. Thought I might bring this up on the screen if I could. So are, are you, is everybody, is everybody seeing the, the package here? So this is for, this is for the sale of, of this, a section of this little plot here. This is all town owned land. It looks like, it looks like these maybe old proposed streets. I'm not, I'm not really sure. This is, this is Davis Street right here, kind of dead ends and turns into, into Harrison Avenue. And so they are the, 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 the person in this who lives here, I believe, is, is making an offer on this, this parcel to join it to their property.
If you can expand, I think it's the white one, Charles, the map. I think it does say David's, Davis Street, parentheses, proposed.
Yeah, okay.
Right, right at the
Yeah.
Just to the right of the yellow highlight, the yellow highlight is the
Right.
Scary in question. I don't know if you can enlarge that, so.
Are folks not, are folks, is that enlarging on the screen for people?
Yes.
Right. So, right. So this was a paper street that runs down and then comes in here along a, a proposed Woodbine Street. And these are pros, potential building lots. I think, I think there's a lot of wetlands back in here, would be my guess, looking at the streams and wetland crossing in here. I don't, I don't necessarily think that we are, the sale of this property is going to impede any future development necessarily back in there.
Charles, if I could ask, I know on the transmittal memo we got, it, it specifies the three questions we're supposed to consider in making a recommendation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have those up on my screen. Do you want to read those off to us?
Sure, it's a separate document. It says the recommendation shall indicate if the property is needed for any city purpose. If any special conditions should be attached to the sale and any additional information that may be appropriate and useful for a determination.
But that's the information that, that, that is looking for from the planning board in, in our.
It's asking, do we need any additional information to make a determination? And then do we do we suggest the property is needed for a city purpose or that any special conditions should be attached to the sale? That's what they're asking us to comment on.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't look like there's any need for the, for the city here. I don't see why they would want this piece. If you look, this is all, this is all wetlands in here. This is a stream running through here. This is like, it's all kind of wet in here. It doesn't you know, and I don't know who owns this property here, you know, these, 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 these theoretical building lots. But i- if somebody wanted to develop, if, if this was developable land, they could still access it off of, off of Summer Street. We're not really, we're not really closing off this. If it, if, if it is developable, I don't know if it is or not. This would be, you know, complicated, you know, wetland crossing in here. It wouldn't be accessing any buildable lots. So I don't really see, you know, selling, selling off this piece of property and potential paper street as, as, as impacting the value of the developable, developable possibilities for that, for that property.
And I know I'll offer that whenever we're looking at the sale of property and this was something we considered in making a recommendation against a sale last year is whether it has any natural benefits. I mean, certainly wildlife corridors and areas are an important part of the master plan, but that doesn't seem at all relevant here. But I just wanted to note that that's one of those things we consider. I mean, having been there, been by there, it's all, you know, very natural setting.
And it looks like, it looks like their side yard, you know, it looks like it.
Yeah.
You would, you would know this wasn't necessarily part of their
Right.
Part of their property.
They're wanting to make it official. Yeah.
Yep, yep. I mean, it's not a building, they, it's not enough to give them another building lot, so they're not going to be able to subdivide the property.
What is the frontage there?
Well, it's fifty feet and that's sixty-six. I believe, I believe the front requirements are sixty-five feet. So it would give them enough property, they could do an ADU addition or something back in there if they wanted to. But that's
Yeah, so I don't see a need, I mean, in answering those questions, I don't see that there's any additional information needed to make a decision. And I can't see any special conditions that should be attached to the sale. Or that it has a it's needed for any city purpose.
Yeah, I would agree. Is there any further discussion on this that people would like to engage in?
Nope, I'm all set.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to forward a a positive recommendation for the sale. I, I don't know that we have to include, we're including those things in the discussion. I don't know, we need to include them in the, in the motion.
Okay, I don't think so.
I second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of, for a positive, forwarding a positive recommendation? Aye?
Aye.
All right, David, that was unanimous. Thank you.
Did you get Amy? I don't know.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Since George always asks this and I never know what is appropriate, when it's not, is this the time when we authorize you to sign for us?
It's not, it's not an A and R. Those are only for A.
Only for A and Rs. Thank you. I picked up on that, George.
Thank you for thinking of me. Makes me feel wanted. Okay. Any board and staff reports?
I just wanted to check, Charles, have you talked with Mark about his?
I haven't. He was, he, he was going to tender his resignation at effective the end of May. So I don't think we're going to see him in any, in, in any future meetings, which is very unfortunate. I thought he was a an important voice on the board.
So I, I didn't want to break that news. I mean, we haven't discussed this at a prior board meeting, right? I just happened upon that today because I was communicating with him. I had mentioned in the last couple of board meetings that on the master plan implementation committee, I was, we were inviting him to come to the June meeting to speak about, because he's been the chair of the Community Preservation Committee as the planning board representative to that.
Right.
That committee.
I think he's stepping down from that role too.
Well, he, he has to, yeah. So he responded to my repeated invitation today and he shared with me that he is having to, for, you know, reasons with other outside demands, he's having to cut back on some things. So he's gonna was going to leave this board, which I agree was really a surprise and unfortunate to hear.
Right.
But he's, he's only on that other committee because he's our representative. He's the planning board representative on the CPC.
Right. So we need to think about somebody to replace Mark.
Exactly.
I'll put that on the agenda with Eric for our next
Yeah, and so, so Mark won't be here again. Sounds like if it was going to be the end of May, so.
Right, so you won't be, I don't think we'll be seeing Mark again. It is too bad. But for members of the public out there who are still listening, we, there is a board seat available, an alternate board seat. I believe, either, either David or Amy will be raised to a full member, a full voting member. And then we'll have another alternate seat available. So if people, if people are interested in getting involved in, in the process and what we do here, please let the mayor know and she'll consider all applications for people who are, or if you know anybody who's interested.
And let me, if I could, challenge a little bit of what you said there, Charles. My experience is it's being elevated from an alternate to a full member is not automatic. There have been times when someone has been put into a full position, even though there was another alternate there. So.
Yeah, okay, you're right, you're right. It's, it's still a process. It requires, it requires an appointment by the mayor and then, and then, and then revocation by this is, is it, is it the boards and committees?
Well, it's a, it's the appointments and ordinances committee.
Right.
We consider it, make a recommendation to the council, right?
Right.
But I just wanted to point out that, again, from my experience, that if Amy and or Dave were interested in being elevated to a full board position, it probably would make sense for them to make that known to the mayor.
That's right.
I'm still a neophyte here.
So I'm not putting pressure on anybody. I just wanted to get the
Right, right.
procedural stuff out there.
Right. Well, there, there, so there, there is a vacancy though, whether it's, whether it's an alter, whether it's an alternate or a potential full voting member board seat.
Yep.
So just so folks know out there.
Contact the mayor's office if interested.
Yep. All right, so the next meeting date is was it June third? Is that what you said, George?
I believe it's the second.
June second.
June second, okay. Six o'clock. Look forward to seeing everybody then.
And as I was mentioning, I got, even before this meeting, got the packet in the mail already, but obviously the agenda will be adjusted to include
Right.
what we're discussing this evening.
Yep.
And stuff, so.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much and thank you to the members of the public out there who, who joined us this evening. Thanks a lot.
Take care, everybody.